I call this meeting of the school committee to order and remind everyone that permission for Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful and engaged like long runners. And I allow you to stand and sit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The item is oral communications. If anybody wants to address the school committee, you have up to three minutes to give us comments on anything on the night. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to recognitions, and we have a special recognition tonight. But first, I just want to recognize the chorus from O'Malley in the high school who performed at the Shea and Lou on Monday night. And it was quite a lovely performance all around what a venue for activity performing in. The middle schools went first, the high school went second, and then they did a song all together. And it was thrilling. So anybody, if there's chances to see the choruses, it was a free admission at that um or evening, so it was quite nice. Anything else? Okay, so we have a special recognition of a very dear person who is retiring, and I just wanted to say a few comments, and then Dr. Satire will say a few comments. So I have known Gunner Muth for a long time. We met on a beach, as he was my commander, actually, for boot camp one summer when it was time to get in shape. And we had a lot of fun, and this was before kids and before my involvement as much in the school. So I have been in many of the students' same situation with them, challenging me every morning. Since then, I've had the honor of seeing him firsthand, as he has helped so many lives at Gloucester High School, leading our JROTC program. On the exterior, and especially when he's in his uniform, Gunner can appear quite formal, but our students quickly learn that he operates from core values of service and motivation to be a significant positive influence on everyone he meets, especially our youth. Our students quickly learn that Rick has an amazing sense of humor, that he retreats and respects each student as an individual, and that he has a heart of gold. We thank you for your influence, countless numbers of students, for influencing countless numbers of our students to achieve at high levels, to take risks and try new things, and taking on roles as leaders, and for helping each of them become the very best that he or she can be. Gloucester will be benefiting from your leadership for many years to come, as the values you instill will be evident in each of the students you have encountered throughout their lives.
Okay, here's talks about your heart. I'd like to talk a little bit about your career. Okay, and so Gunner has been involved with the Junior ROTC program since his start date with the district on August 1, 1996. He's led that program with distinction, has helped shape the lives of countless numbers of Gloucester students. He's led them through drill and leadership training, Leadership 1, Leadership 2, and Leadership 3 and 4 classes throughout their high school careers. These classes are open to all students who want to learn the traits and principles that enable them to become a better leader. Among the military and commanding military drill, students focus on leadership traits and skills, critical thinking, decision making, planning, commanding, and case studies of successful leaders throughout the course of a high school JROTC career. Junior ROTC cadets learn about personal development of values, etiquette, and responsibility. They're taught about what it means to be organized. They learn first aid, CPR, public speaking, community service, and principles of physical fitness. Students also learn the importance of dependability, personal responsibility, good judgment, and self-discipline. It's starting to sound like you a little bit, but I like it. All of the courses in the JROTC program are designed to prepare students to take these leadership roles in all walks of our society. Nowhere in our curriculum are these qualities more directly addressed than in the Junior ROTC program with Gunner at the helm, guiding, teaching, cajoling, and reminding students of their responsibility not only to themselves, but to something bigger than themselves of which they are a part. In addition to being the senior instructor, Gunner has also been a boys' basketball coach, a volunteer football coach, freshman football coach, junior varsity football, organizing cadets at all sorts of ceremonies, especially the memorial day ceremonies, and a freshman baseball coach. He's a graduate of Adam Smith University and holds a Master of Arts in Educational Leadership from America's University, and also is certified in nonviolent crisis intervention. I'd like to read one letter. I took the liberty of going through your personal file, if you don't mind, just to see if there was something that would sort of epitomize and embody the spirit and the actuality of the work that you've done. This is a letter from October 28, 2002, and it's from the Operations Commander from the City of Gloucester Police Department. Dear Chief Warrant Officer Muth, On Saturday, October 26, 2002, the President's own United States Marine Band presented a concert to the citizens of Gloucester as part of their 2002 National Tour. Remember that? I do. Truly as memorable and stirring as the concert was, I want to point out a second source of pride felt by all. Everyone present felt that the conduct displayed by your cadets was very professional and dignified. While providing security and assistance within the perimeters of the school, they showed a professionalism and a dedication to the city of Gloucester that manifested an exemplariness for all of us in their obvious pride at taking part in the occasion. They symbolized to people present that our young people are proud of their country and dedicated to its ideals. As the officer in charge of police details, I have witnessed hundreds of functions at which it is of paramount importance that persons providing security do so with the utmost discretion and tact. The cadets under your command will stand out in my memory. You should be very proud of them. Every request we ask of them, they perform and perform honorably. Please express to the cadets my gratitude and the thanks of all who attended the concert. We are very proud of Gloucester High School ROTC and of the fine job you are doing with the students. You are all to be commended, and we are equally as proud of you and your career. Thank you very much, Gunner.
So I have a citation. I will read. This is for Gloucester Public Schools. Gunner Richard Muth, Gloucester High School, Korean Corps Junior ROTC Senior Instructor. On behalf of the superintendent and the school committee, we are pleased to confer upon you the citation and recognition of your many years of dedication to Gloucester Public Schools and your strong commitment to inspiring, challenging, and mentoring our students. Your leadership has positively shaped the character of many of Gloucester students that will guide them in their future. Given under our signature and the seal of Gloucester Public Schools on its 22nd day of May 2019. Signed by the superintendent committee, John. This is the white.
I don't need to write off.
It took too long. Okay? Thank you. Anybody have anything to add?
So I was a student at GHS during Gunner's tenure, although I was not in the program. I had a lot of peers who were in the program. And one of the things that struck me was you had cohorts that formed pretty quickly in the high school based on what level of that kind of success you're looking for, what sort of career path you're looking for. And ROTC was one of these melting pots where you had AP and honor students in with shop kids, that sort of thing. And what really struck me was I had, you know, peers in my grade and grades on either side of me who otherwise weren't quite sure which direction they're going to be heading after school, but they found a passion for the discipline of the military, not a passion for the community service aspects, and they actually then went off into successful military careers that I don't know they otherwise would have thought about because they didn't have a military background in their family or otherwise. And so I was always really impressed by what students who kind of went into ROTC almost by chance, you know, said, oh, I'll give it a shot, you know, kind of got on a straightened path and left school to be successful career people. So I sort of give you kudos for that. It was really impressive to watch.
I too want to say thank you very much for your service. I've been hearing a lot of good things about you since I got on the school committee 12 years ago. I'm very impressed with how you have changed character in our students and how you've instilled good morals and good values that carry on outside of school. It's exciting to know that our kids are excited about our ROTC program. Our program is a success, many thanks to you. I have the privilege of working with Ryan Freydy's mother. Ryan talks about the program that he's in and loves the program that he's in, and the ambitions that he has as a result of being under your leadership is incredible, and a lot of students have the same. You have made such an impact on our kids, more than we can even put in words, and I can't thank you enough for that. So thank you for your service, and I wish you lots of happiness in your retirement.
Thank you so much for all the years that you have been here. I know that without you, some of the kids that have come through our schools would not have achieved the success that they have achieved. And I just firmly believe that you have made these kids have a place in the school that they really love, and I really just appreciate you for all your hard work and dedication to our kids. Good luck.
And we thank all the students, obviously, that are here because of their affection for you. So thank you for all coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So our student council, advisory council must be up to bring your casters.
There was a softball game, and I left to come here, so.
So they're okay.
At the softball game, they were up.
Jamima was at, she feel happy?
No, she's good at softball.
Senior night for something, she was.
It was senior night for softball tonight. That's where I did that first and then came here after, so.
Yeah, we can't blame them for.
No. It was a big night for them. It was really great crowd, great game. I left, you know, didn't get the final result, but we were winning, and that would mean winning the league, so.
Wow, that's great.
Yep, and then the playoffs coming up, so.
They have been phenomenal all school year.
Absolutely.
Really keeping us informed and.
And in the classroom was amazing is the, how many times during senior night, National Honor Society was red. Each kid has a little introduction, and, you know, going to great colleges, and National Honor Society, National Honor Society. And the announcer may have said, I think I see a pattern here. So it's in the classroom, right, it's in the community, as well as the softball diamonds. So it was a good night, but that's where they are.
We have, the next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Under deliberations and educational issues, we have, the first item is college and career placement for the class of 2019.
James, I don't know what you're looking at.
Come on up.
So at this time of year, we have a preliminary list of students, where they're headed, post-secondary outcomes for students. We get the final list and make adjustments when students get their caps and gowns on June 7. Our tradition is they get the cap and gown from their guidance counselor, and as part of that, they, some students maybe have changed their minds about their college, maybe made some adjustments and plans. So we have the preliminary feedback through the guidance counselors of what students are doing now. But we don't, we don't have the comprehensive overall data, but I can, I wanted to start by saying a little bit about, you know, the class of 2018. And that about 54% of our students in the class of 2018 went on to four-year schools, and another 23% went on to two-year schools. We've seen a flip in the private-public number. So for the four-year schools, we see more students going into public schools now. It used to be a couple percentage points on the private side, and now it's a couple percentage points on the public side. Over the past five years, we've seen, we've gone from about 12% of students going into two-year schools to almost, as I said, 23% going on to year schools. And that's about the same number of students going four-year, but we've seen this jump in two-year, and I think that's due to some efforts. And we've made, particularly in our English classes, connecting with Wellspring to help kids. It can be difficult for Gloucester kids to make that connection to North Shore Community College in Danvers, and we've really solidified that through our guidance and through Wellspring supporting. So that's something I noticed in the numbers. We've had an increase, new students going into the military by a couple points, up to 5%. Again, this is the 2018 numbers. And another 5% or so going to other post-secondary outcomes. That includes things like students often out of our auto program going to the National Aviation Academy, and other students have recently gone to places like Ohio Tech College from the auto program. There's a couple examples of other post-secondary outcomes. So some highlights from this year so far. Some of the highlights are, we have a student going to WPI in Worcester, a couple students going to Boston College, the College of William and Mary, Trinity College, Wesleyan, the College of the Holy Cross, the universities of Vermont, Connecticut, Rhode Island, New Hampshire. No one yet for Maine, but we could complete New England. And also, we have a student coming to Brown University from this class. You know, the local schools, we see a lot of our students, again, are going to state schools, and we've talked in this forum about some of the reasons for that and some of the costs associated with post-secondary education. We have a lot of students going on to UMass Amherst, UMass Lowell, Salem State, Fitchburg State, and North Shore University College. Some of our students are going further away, University of Pittsburgh, West Virginia University, Virginia Tech, Frostburg State University, which is in Maryland. I had to look that up. And University of Mississippi, University of Mississippi, so some of the more distant schools that folks are going to. Again, we, even today, we're going over some scholarships today, and some students have changed since our last, you know, their last communication with guidance counselors. So some of this is still in flux, but, you know, we're very proud of the diversity of the places our students are going. You can see by the list, I think, that through the students initiative and research, as well as through our guidance counselors, they're looking far afield for the best fit. We're finding increasingly that schools that are rated in similar areas, it's very unpredictable which schools in a certain zone a student will get into. They often get into one or two, but maybe not the one they had expected, right? They sometimes will get into a more competitive school and not into a less competitive school, and so on. So our counselors are working with parents and the students to be flexible in finding that really good fit, even if it's not what you had in mind. And you can see, I think, from the list that they're, you know, looking farther afield and finding that good place for them, a good place for their major, right, a good place that feels like a fit when you visit the campus. All of those things are not just relying on name recognition and so on. So those are some of the trends we're seeing as well. So that's what we've got so far.
How many students are graduating?
In this class? We're not 100% sure how many are graduating at this time, but it'll be over 200 students. So it's a fairly good class.
Any questions? Can we dual enrollment with any of the colleges?
We do, we offer some, well, so there are a couple different ways. We, you can, some of the courses, you can take at Gloucester High School, we have connections through, for instance, our college accounting class with North Shore Community College. So there are, particularly in business and the elective, we're linked, so if you take the course at Gloucester High School, you then get credit at North Shore Community College. Our Endicott program will be concluding this year, but that's another place. We did have conversations with them recently about another form that that could take. We host evening classes from Salem State at our school, which is free of cost for our students, which is a great program and very well attended by our students, and that will be continuing. But then we also have students who complete certain graduation requirements at North Shore Community College, and we accept those credits. So that's another opportunity for students.
Do you have memorandum of agreement with North Shore?
We do, for the particular classes that we, that are part of our course catalog, we have memorandum of agreement to offer that dual enrollment credit while they take classes with us. That's the same with Endicott, for our Endicott program, but unfortunately, that will be included.
What's the fee schedule? How does that work?
So at North Shore, they get the credits, as long, for North Shore, as long as they go to North Shore Community College, they get those credits there for simply taking the courses at Gloucester High School.
Do they pay?
You know, that's a.
Was it a grant?
Yeah, my sense is that they get those credits by taking them at our school. It's kind of a way in to those schools from Gloucester High School, right? There's some data about if you complete, and I wish I could remember the exact number of courses, but the rate, you know, if you get three or four courses in, the rate of completion is, you know, it's an absolute steep curve up. A lot of students will take one or two, so this is a way to hook people into North Shore, so they're trying to get those completers in. And then the Endicott classes have been very little money, and those transfer to other colleges as well. They don't have to go that.
It's such a great opportunity, and I don't really care much about it. I mean, as a graduate of North Shore that started off without a lot of student debt by doing that, and now it's a good course to follow, and I don't hear enough about it, so I was just wondering if it still existed.
Sure. And we've increased, as you know, as I said at the beginning, our number of students going to two-year schools, which is primarily North Shore, has increased tremendously. It's been a lot of work in that area, particularly to help students make the connection, you know, so they're connected now. We take them down there, take the Accuplacer test, and hook them in, but then, are they following up? And that's where Wellspring has been a great partner in helping follow up with those students. Do they actually follow through in the fall? And that's been a great partnership, that's a huge connection. And because North Shore isn't here in Gloucester, we know how important it is to make connections across the bridge, you know, and make sure they're hooked in, and they feel like that's their place. That's kind of been our attitude about, like, this is your college, North Shore Community College for our community. That's been our message. It's been a really good partnership. They've been tremendous coming up to our school, having us, you know, take some buses down to Danvers to visit there. It's been a really good connection.
That's great. Thank you.
Sure. And as you know, we'll be looking, that was one of the things we talked about at the vocational meeting, we're going to want to increase those connections as well to post-secondary schools. It's one of the goals with the advisory committees.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. The next item in business, we have a request for placing a batting cage at West Parish Elementary School for the Chargers Girls Softball Team. We have Glenn McKepner and Dan Kaput to help us understand, since this is one of our policies that we have to accept.
I reached out to Richard via an email. I wasn't really sure what the protocol was about going there, so thank you for connecting us with the school committee. Been involved with U-Sports for 35 years, coaching all different sports. Proud town director of the flag football program here at town. Went from 30 kids to almost 400 right now, boys and girls. So this is our first venture. I've looked across the city sports. Girl softball is one of the only ones that's not supported fully. They don't have a batting cage. Little League does, high schools do, you know, so I looked at this as an opportunity to present it to you folks, and not looking for the city to fund any of it. It's going to be all privately funded by our organizations. So if we're here to answer any questions or discuss whether you'd like to.
And this has been discussed with the Department of Public Works, correct?
Yes, and they're supportive of this. This will be at West Parish playground along the right field fountain.
Yes. While I'm arranging with the school kids participate in their daily activities, I think my daughter goes to West Parish right now. I mean, this will lead on to additional things we're funding, including the girls in the summer softball, these will be their age groups, fifth and sixth, seventh, eighth graders will be playing out of towns throughout the summer to continue on their enjoyment of the sport, and hopefully this grows into some of the girls, like one of my girls is playing for the high school varsity team right now, and she started off with the Chargers organization. Dan is now the coordinator of the Chargers. I've been the vice president of the Chargers organization for 20 years now. So any questions you folks have on it, absolutely, fire away.
Is this just for the Chargers or for the other students?
For the entire, anybody in U-softball who wants, any girl who wants to play U-softball is going to go with their use.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
I was part of the committee that brought the shed up to West Parish. Previously, we had a building up there that was to be taken out. I asked a few of the parents that were on the pretty at the time, Jenny Cook being one of them, you know, the architect, and I asked them what the plan was to replace the building. There wasn't one, so I designed it, and they were able to get it built up there, and we shared halfway with the school. So everyone's getting use of that building up there. The intent is for the committee, you know, the community to be able to use as much as possible, you know, and to control it to make sure it's not vandalized or out of context and never used during school times.
Any questions?
So what is the funding source?
Interesting, you should ask that. Who is funding it right now would be the KPN Girls Fast Pitch League that's been designed, was previously, just, it's all the organizations, the Chargers, Rockets, Vikings, Tigers. Flag Football is sponsoring the girls to play this summer, so we're buying all the uniforms, paying for their league fees and their insurances. So it's going to be zero cost to the parents. So we take all the money that we raise at Flag Football and turn it back into the community, one of which we sponsor the kids going away on their little trip next week, fifth graders.
Oh, so.
Yeah, our program gave $2,000 to the city, to help out any of those parents that couldn't afford it.
Oh, nice.
Didn't know the protocol there. We gave checks to each individual, so we didn't realize it was supposed to be turned into the general fund, but that's okay. So hopefully that money will take use for some of the kids. Hopefully. If it didn't, well, it could be someplace.
I was going to just make a motion to equip a batting cage at West Parish Elementary for the Chargers Girls Softball Team.
Second.
Discussion? I just want to say, when we were doing the West Parish project, one of the goals was to make sure we maintain adequate recreational facilities there, and so it was built with a little league or softball field in mind, knowing that that's one of those areas of need, having adequate softball fields, and there's room enough for football, the beautiful football there. So I'm glad it's getting used by the community, because that was one of the goals, is to make sure the community really.
A lot of our league is also helping Joe Lucino fixing up a lot of the softball field, so the funds are there to help him as well. So we have the money. We just want to put it to good use and make sure the kids are out there playing.
That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Nice to meet you, face. Take care.
Okay. Next, here's the highlight. Jonathan's kidding. It's always the highlight.
Well, thank you. City Council vote to authorize renovation of Field House took place, was it last Tuesday, a week ago Tuesday? They have appropriated and approved approximately $1.6 million for the renovation of the Field House and the bleachers. Given the timing of the vote, the time needed for the full completion of the schematic design, the consideration of the needs of the class and the athletics during the school year, and the wisdom in maximizing the time of construction when the building is least occupied based upon some legacy that exists within the building, we expect that most of the construction will be completed over the summer of 2020.
Not this year?
No, not this year. No way. And between athletics, physical education classes, ROTC, anchor programs, substantially separate programs, they couldn't possibly have completed the project before January, which means half a year, the schools would not be able to use the Field House.
So my understanding of the horror of it is that Field House is not that it was designed improperly, but it was built improperly. So why are we going back to just come out with, you know, why are we able to say, go build, we were just a bill in '93? Why do we have to redesign the field? Why do we pull up the plans and go, hey, you're supposed to put X-inch of plywood down, go put X-inch of plywood down, right?
Yeah, I would, that's my language. I would refer that kind of a question to Dorn Whittier. I mean, they're the guys who are ultimately responsible for the blueprint and the implementation. The City of Gloucester and the Department of Public Works for its oversight, but whatever they see structurally and in terms of engineering, I'm really not in a position to make a.
Sure. Are they.
improperly, but it was built improperly. So why are we going back to just come out with, you know, why are we able to say, go build, we're just a bill in 93? Why do we have to redesign the field? Why can't we pull up the plans and go, hey, you're supposed to put X inch of plywood down, go put X inch of plywood down, right?
Yeah, I would, that's my language. I would refer that kind of a question to Dorian Whittier. I mean, they're the guys who are ultimately responsible for the blueprint and the implementation. The city of Gloucester and the Department of Public Works for its oversight. But whatever they see structurally and in terms of engineering, I'm really not in a position to make a.
Sure. Are they redesigning the fieldhouse?
Again, that's my language. What they're going to be doing, by the time they're done, we're going to have a shift-shape track that is going to fall apart. We're going to have the gymnasium floor and the bleachers are going to be repaired as well, if not replaced.
I used to know how long it took to do the roof. The roof wasn't, you know, the design, the roof wasn't all that long, right? And there's a roof we're going to replace. It was going to be different with that.
And I believe that most of that work was done over the summer.
No, no, I agree. It was interesting that you were going to get this bit out. Say, go build, it was going to be developed. It sounds like, in my head, I thought this was a repair, not a reconstruction, I guess.
Well, we did ask the question through the, the council asked the question, we asked the question, and I think the bidding for summer work would have had to have been out for papers a couple months ago, so given the timing through the city and to BNF.
Sure. I said we're not paying to, we might have to redesign or redo it. We already paid for it once.
And it's unfortunate that we missed another season. The good news is it'll be there for hopefully a few decades in next year.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but wasn't the gym built smaller so it's not a regulation tract inside? So the only designing is probably just putting the track in the same place that it is, knowing it's not up to code. And JD might be able to talk to that because I know it's been an issue.
Okay, agree with Dr. Sapphire and other things. Unfortunately, the first go-around was awful. It was just the, for a whole lot of reasons, I'm not going to go point any fingers. There was the coach and we tried to, what we tried to do, we weren't allowed to do. One of the things that we did, when we found that we could do a fieldhouse, what we could call a fieldhouse is a jumble gym, you could come off the footprint of what existed. So what you were able to do was determined by that, not what you wanted. Now, we wanted a little bit more track, but we just couldn't get it because however the procedures went, you had to go by, because it was a bid thing and all of that. But again, you could not come off the footprint. We managed to squeeze a little more room out towards the weight room, but we couldn't push out further that way either. So that's what we were starting with first go-around. I just hope the second go-around, because as far as I'm sure it will.
And I'll be more than happy to invite Dorian Whittier to come in and they can talk about the specifics of what exactly needs to be laid out before they go work.
I know I would be interested in that, just to get the conversation going so that we know what the expectations are when it happens.
Sure.
And we're very grateful to the city for funding this.
Very much so.
Yes, it's a great thing.
Item number two, Gloucester High School Academic Recognition Night is tomorrow night, beginning at, beginning at 7 o'clock. Lots of celebration, lots of accomplishment and part of us too can still be awarded in English, math, science, social studies, art, music, world language, career and vocational education, more specifically in areas like literature by women in journalism, math, media in the modern age, international relations, robotics, marine biology, forensic science, mathematical modeling, probability and statistics, banking, graphic arts, counter design and innovation, and leadership and career vocational technology. So it's very diverse course offerings that we have in the high school and a great opportunity for children to find something that really resonates with them. And we get a chance to also celebrate those who have excelled in each of those particular areas. Item number three, just an update, the Comprehensive School Health Services Month Grant. We have been awarded $95,000 for four years with an opportunity to renew two, two-year offerings after that. And I'm just pointing out that the contract has been signed, has been sent back to the Department of Public Health, and we'll be designing our in-school suspension program with the commensurate wraparound health, mental health services as well, and should see that implementation beginning in September of the next school year. A brief update on history, social science, and civics education. The Board of Education has been very active since June of 2018, putting into place new civics requirements, skills, competencies, knowledge in civics, as well as the requirement for certain projects that will be required as well. I bring it up to also point out that we're at least, we're ahead of the curve in that we have converted our grade eight social studies, history program into a civics course in its full year, and we're making similar kinds of adjustments at the high school level. And by 2020, 2021, all civics programs across the grades are technically required to have a project based as well. Is this something that you're in a position to add?
No, I think it covered it, except that at some point I'd like to, if the school committee is interested, eighth grade in particular has made a really substantial shift to the curriculum, but they've been at it for about a year and a half. They've been meeting in the summer, they've planned multiple trips to the State House, they've had a speaker series where elected officials have come into the classroom. They've really taken this on in a big way and have been ahead of most districts in the state. And I think it might be nice if maybe in the, maybe in the fall, there's not enough time this year, but maybe in the fall if the teachers came with some students to talk about what they're up to, I think that would be a good program.
Great to have kids do a presentation.
Yeah.
And a reminder as well that the Student Government Day will take place on May the 28th. I believe we have at least 25 or so students who are signed up and they'll be being escorted by the mayor, city councilors, department managers, school committee members. Opportunity for some of our students to see up close the work that our public officials are doing. And again, that's the 28th. The Massachusetts Safe Routes to Schools Survey. The Department of Education is looking at issues of transportation, traffic, congestion, pollution near schools, increasing health, safety, and physical activity of students. And there may even be some conversations on Beacon Hill about increased funding for transportation sources across the Commonwealth. What I do want to mention is that in conjunction with this, the Safe Routes to School folks are going to be coming out to the O'Malley Innovation Middle School as well to conduct a survey on how students are getting to school, and they will come and observe both our arrival and dismissal on May 14th and May 21st. This has been a conversation that we've been having with the school, with the Department of Public Works as well, and we're looking to see what we do to increase our efficiency and of course our safety with respect to arrival and dismissal at the O'Malley Innovation Middle School. Last item is just an update. The Senate Budget Committee has made its budget proposal, the state senate. It's a $268.4 million increase in Chapter 70 education aid, which is about $68 million more than the governor's budget and about $50 million more than the House budget. And of course, as we know, traditionally and annually, the three groups will be getting together and committing and ultimately reconciling differences. They're calling for an increase of about $30 per student. The governor's increase averages out to $20 per student. In either case, we're talking between $60,000 and $100,000 increase to the Chapter 70 funding for Gloucester, which is not a heck of a lot. The Mass Municipal Association is calling for a $100 increase per student as well. The Senate plan has been more aggressive with respect to implementing the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. They'd like to see more money appropriated more quickly. They have placed a little bit more emphasis on increasing funding for economically disadvantaged students as well, the per pupil expenditures. And last, they are asking to fully fund special education circuit breaker. Historically, that threshold was set at 75% reimbursement for any costs that are four times the state average for per pupil expenditure. And they are calling for a full funding, which would be 75% reimbursement. We'll wait and see what happens.
Sub move. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will move on to subcommittee reports, and Tony Gross is not with us this evening, so I will read that report because Jonathan is not here either. Those are the three of us on the committee. In terms of district-wide expenditures, we are still in good shape. We're running at a reasonable spending level relative to the budget, with adequate money for special educational repay. We talked about opening closed tickets for the DPW and Mike Hale joined the meeting. And I don't remember the numbers he gave, but in terms of the hundreds of tickets that have been put in and dealt with by the DPW, most of them were dealt with within short amount of time.
Yes, there are approximately between 1,100 and 1,200 tickets that have been submitted since January 2018, and all but 18 of them have been closed. And of the 1,150, let's say, about 550 or so were done within one day.
450 or what?
The tickets went in and within, and about of the 1,100 or so, of close to almost half of them were done within, were completed within a day. So you put the ticket in and the next day, the work's done.
So we're only sharing this information on you.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you.
And I've got the spreadsheet as well.
Yeah, you talked about how to organize them all a bit within his department and about, you know, the right personnel to be addressing these things. And I think just in the schools getting better about how they manage the work and how to get the requested is really smoothed out nicely.
Can I ask, do we see a lot of teachers reaching out on the system or is it just principals? Or what is the process for that?
The process is quite simple. If a teacher or a staff member has an issue with something in their room or wherever, they go to the secretary or the principal. They say, we'd like to have a ticket filled out. That ticket is supposed to be filled out with the name of the particular staff member as well, so that throughout the entire process, as DPW is assigning it to somebody, as it's being looked at the first time, as it's being worked on, as it's being completed, the maintenance person sends an email. That email goes back to the principal and or secretary and is also CC'd to the staff member, so they can see the whole process.
And this has been like this for?
Oh, it's been going on three years now.
Great.
I should, I was at a meeting, it might have been the mediation meeting with the high school and such, and I was asked, and will do so, to send out a notice reminding staff members as to this process. Not terribly hard.
Food service debt has gone down a couple thousand from the last time we had the information. So there's still some outstanding balances, but the situation is not getting worse and it's, it seems to be coming down. We have a motion coming out of BNF, which we'll do in a little bit. We put, we tabled the stipend position for student obligations and with respect to student bus fees and procedures, we have asked the administration to come up with a simplified proposal that seemed to be different categories for different grades and distance and it just, it's, yeah, so it's going to be simplified and then come back to the N F. So it wasn't brought forward for any fee increase, but more from a, is this clear? Easy to implement.
And those procedures will include the Harrison Ave issue?
That's already been addressed.
Has it?
Yes, there are, again, there are three students there. I think two are on previous plan. And in consistent with the school committee policy about walkers and riders, if it's an area that we consider a bit hazardous per child, then they do ride first. We'll make sure that is the case next year.
So that's building in finance. The program subcommittee met on May 9th and we had two items on our agenda. One is the crowdfunding policy. As we do more and more online fundraising or groups do, we wanted to make sure we have a policy that's clear. So we have some work to do. The things we're looking for are kind of how do we define crowdfunding, like what kind of fundraisers, just because it's outlined, is it crowdfunding? What does it mean? Some examples and then look for some practical application of that policy so we all understand how to communicate what falls in. So that's going to come back. And the other item was parent partnerships and the subject itself has to do with kind of strengthening educational partnerships with parents and being informative with parents about different topics that they might be of interest to them, social media, vaping, math curriculum. But the one item we thought might be a good topic, which could be, have some impact is over, you know, looking at open houses. And so the leadership team is going to talk about open houses and how to better engage parents on that evening and what else could they go by as well. So those will all be coming back. Now we have action. The first item is approval and acceptance of grants. The first grant is a fiscal '19 Massachusetts 21st Century Community Learning Center Summer Enhancement Grant in the amount of $16,150.
Sub move. Second discussion, would you like to?
Yeah, I think it's good to give some kudos to the, once again, to the O'Malley After School Program, the 21st Century Summer Academy. It's, this grant goes to extend the summer program, to add another teacher, add additional classes. And just as a reminder, it's a, this is a program that's an exemplary model program for the state and was recently awarded an exemplary program status. So this is on top of the very substantial grant we already get to provide even better sort of program. So hopefully this is something we'll be able to take advantage of this year and in the future as well. Allison Hells really gets a lot of credit not only for writing and receiving grant but for her daily work.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next grant is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Comprehensive School Health Services Grant in the amount of $95,000 each year for four years totaling $380,000.
Sub move.
Second. How do we get that? Who wrote the grant?
Broke to our attention, right? Was it Nurse Junker?
Yeah, broke to our attention. It was a combined effort. Greg, Cindy Junker, Director of Nursing, Andrew Jordan, Jenny Doris Cook, and a little bit myself, I formatted a template of it, so I think we'll formalize it. And they put the grant together. This originally was the nursing money. I've mentioned this a number of times. This was the nursing money that we had for salaries. That grant was shut down and then they established this competitive grant, which is independent of, but will provide us with the aforementioned in-house suspension program.
All in, all in favor?
We already took action on the approval of the batting cage. And the next item is approval of increased rate for food service and supervisor substitutes from $11 to $12 per hour. Melissa, you want to talk about that?
Sure. So through negotiations and conversations with food service, we've realized that our staff may not be paid a competitive wage and there's been difficulty in getting substitutes when the food staff is out. So to be consistent with what we've done with other groups, meeting the minimum wage requirement, even though I think the district has taken the position that we do not have to comply with the law, we want to comply knowing that salaries are important in households and we want to do the best we can for our work. So we referred this to the Building and Finance Committee. And at their last meeting, they put a motion forward, which was, there was a recommendation to the committee to increase the rate of food service and supervisor substitutes from $11 to $12 per hour, which is in conjunction with the minimum wage law. An isimove.
Second.
Discussion. I think as part of our motion, we also said that we'd like to keep pace with the minimum wage as it.
As it progresses.
As it progresses to. So I guess the question is, well, is that, that's the, that was our intent of the motion. And I guess the only clarification is, is that a September, you know, like new school year or is that a January 1st?
So it's a January 1st when it triggers the increase, and I think it goes up by 50 cents each year. So I would amend the motion to increase it from $11 to $12 per hour commencing now.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately, and then to stay on par with the, the increases at, on January 1st of each year until 2023, when it reaches $15.
So you're amending?
So I'm amending that motion to stay there, just doing.
Okay. Do you get that, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay. Alon Baker.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for doing that.
All right, and we're moving on to discussion and other conversations. M S V A uptake.
Okay, so M S V A uptake means the East Gloucester building project, the work on that project has been stalled, because for all three potential site locations that are being looked at, East Gloucester site, Veterans, and the Green Street site, the titles, the property ownership information was not available, so it had to be uncovered, and once, once that information was provided, it then had to go out to an agency in order to make some sense out of it, so there are a legal agency that has been looking at that. Effective, I believe, yesterday, Legal Counsel for the City, Chip Pace, has sent an email out to Doran Whittier saying that the agency that is looking at the titles is wrapping it up, and they should be sending it over shortly. So I would like to think that by this afternoon, at this present time, that Doran Whittier is in possession of the observations and the conclusions drawn by that particular agency. There may be an issue with one piece of property on Green Street, and Mr. Pace has asked the agency to identify what that is. I don't know what he's referring to, but we'll find out fairly quickly. With now having in their possession the, the property ownerships and the titles, et cetera, this enables Doran Whittier to begin all of the necessary requisite studies in terms of geotechnical and engineering, and traffic, and everything else that they do, in order to begin to assess and evaluate a host of options at all three sites, from a single building, which is simply a renovation of the East Gloucester Elementary School, to the potential for a consolidated school on any of the three potential sites, and for a host of different other options in between as well.
How did someone get that information? You going to say at the next meeting?
I don't know that they will have that information at the next meeting, it's a question of bringing in their experts and their consultants, and I don't know the exact timeline as to when Doran Whittier will be in a position to provide us with that information. I'd like to think by the end of the summer, but I would have to speak with them to find out.
How will people get that information?
The next, the next building committee will probably get an update from Doran Whittier on exactly what the timeline will look like, but as far as the date of the next.
June 6th.
Is June 6th, so hopefully they'll be able to give us a sense of when they think that all that information will come together.
Yeah, that information comes back, we don't need to hear.
Sorry for interrupting, I was trying to figure out.
Yes, welcome to the club.
All right, next preschool location.
Preschool location, we met with Doran Whittier yesterday, and they went through a variety of schematic potentials, they have done space summaries, both for the preschool and for central office, and they began to show us the, what available space exists at the middle school and at the high school, and they sort of characterized each room as being used more than 85% of the time, between 50 and 85%, or less than 50% of the time. The point being is that if there were to be some domino moving of classrooms around and so on and so forth, it would be based upon their information regarding how much, what percentage of the time during the school day, the particular rooms are used. And they showed us a couple of schematics as to where potentially a middle school, a preschool, or central office could be located, at either the middle school or the high school. And now they're going to go back and continue to refine those particular options, they're also looking at this particular building as well, should, for example, central office move out, what would be necessary to make this room, this building workable for the preschool, since they've gone over the past five years from 75 students to an excess of 150 students. And they'll be presenting that refinement along with cost comparison options as well. Cost comparison options does not mean this is going to cost a dollar 59, what it means is if we do this, it's going to cost this much, if we do something else, somewhere else, it may cost that much, so the cost will be relative to each of the particular potential projects that they come up with.
In your packet, there's a letter regarding naming the Gloucester High School weight room, and I think we need to get a meeting on the calendar to discuss a couple of those requests about naming and how it relates to our policy.
You meant that super sub really, right, and chairs and behaviors?
Of course, sub committee, I like that.
Wow. I think that's the way we just decide.
Naming committees?
Yeah. Okay. And last, we have the Gloucester High School, end of year calendars for seniors, as Dr. Sapphire mentioned, tomorrow night is the academic recognition night at the auditorium at Gloucester High School at 7:00 P M. The grand promenade before the seniors have their prom is Friday, May 31st at 5:30 P M, and that is in the Field House. Senior Awards Night is at the Gloucester High Auditorium on Friday, June 7th at 7:00 P M, and graduation is at Newell Stadium on June 9th, 1:30, and hopefully it will be a beautiful sunny day. And the last thing I'd want to mention for calendar is O'Malley is having their last chorus performance in the next year, it's day at 6:30 at O'Malley, if anybody's interested. So any, your business.
I do, I do something. On May 15th, at the high school, I attended the Gloucester High School C B T E, which is Career Vocational Technical Educational, I mean, what's the E?
Education.
What is it, educational, I thought it was something else.
Education.
Yeah, General Advisory Committee, as a member, this is, this is a meeting that is kind of new to me, and fairly new to the district, which discusses best practices for automotive, carpentry, electrical, and machine technology. I just wanted to give a shout out to James Cook, who organized this meeting and did an incredible job, and Jack Porter, who was able to lead the meeting to a point where they appointed co-chairs instead of one chairperson, we had two people coming forward as a chair to the General Advisory. Tonight, I, before this meeting, I emailed you the documents that were distributed at that meeting to give you an idea of who was involved, we're very lucky to have a lot of community members that were either involved with our school programs or are involved in the trades that are here, willing and able and wanting to give us advice on how to run the programs, to talk about their expectations from students, and to instill good work ethics and values into the students. I learned at this meeting that we have 50 to 60 students that are interested in our programs next year, which is huge, that is a very large amount. So bringing this up for two reasons, I want to be put out on it from a high level, knowing that these two co-chairs would like to come before the school committee before the end of the year, which gives us about two more meetings in June, so that they can introduce themselves and tell them, and tell us in more detail what happened at this meeting. I don't want to be the spokesperson for it, I want the chairs to do it, because it gets more involved. So I'm hoping that we can ask Dr. Sapphire to request to James Cook and also let Jack Porter know, so that Bill Martin is a co-chair, and Sariae Hoff, who's a N S A graduate from advancement packaging, they're the co-chair, so they'll need to be notified to come to the meeting. So if we can let James and Jack Porter know, they will notify them on which of the next two meetings you want them to attend to give us some information on the vocational programs. And I would also request the administration, if we can get a report either at that meeting or sometime soon, on what the plan is to address this huge amount of enrollment that we're going to be faced with next year. I'm hoping that we don't have to say no to anybody due to not enough staff, I don't know that we budgeted for that, or had those conversations yet, about 50 to 60 students that are involved now, that doesn't mean it won't be higher, it could be a little lower by the time enrollment comes, but I just would like the district to be prepared as best as possible, working within the budget guidelines that we have, so.
The high school's been working very hard.
They have, and that shows, that's huge, 50 to 60 kids. And to have the community involved in a way that I didn't know that it was, it just made my night. It was, it was really enthusiastic and a great reflection of all the work that's gone into improving this program, like we asked you to do last year, it's been able, so kudos to you too.
A little bit.
Cool.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. Second. Alon Baker.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.